Good evening, I'd like to call City Council to order. And I'd like to welcome all of you that are in attendance, either in person or the few that may be watching on television. Welcome and appreciate your participation by being involved in that fashion. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Zipri.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Papaskio.
Present.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
Mayor Potembe-Riggsby is absent. There is a quorum.
The council has been meeting in closed session since shortly after 5:30. I would like to ask our city attorney to report on any of the activities related to that closed session that are appropriate for our public session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session on a first matter related to the meet and confer process where they gave direction to the negotiating representative for the city. There's no final action report at this time.
Thank you. This brings us to time for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask you to stand with me and we'll start with the invocation. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to get together as a community, as a city council and redevelopment agency. We all need your wisdom and your patience and foresight in dealing with the various issues before us tonight. We ask you to provide those qualities to our meeting and thank you for doing that. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Any items to be added or deleted to the agenda?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. This is the time on our agenda for oral reports and public participation on any item that is not on the agenda. Again, if you have an item that you would like to speak in regards that's on the agenda, please wait till that item is officially entered into. Otherwise, if there's an item not listed on the agenda, now is the opportunity if you would like to express concern or information or questions on that. Any items not on the agenda? Mr. Ramos.
My name is Fred Ramos. I live at 26445 First St. in the historical Bryn Mawr. I know these are hard times, financial situation throughout the country as well as here in the, here in the city. I have a letter that I receive monthly, every month from the San Bernardino Food Bank. As you know, I am an agency and I pass out food every third Wednesday of the month. This will be the 17th, which will be next month. There are, there's, there's an article that appeared in Sunday's newspaper and it says, "Support your local food bank." And so I'm asking people that can support us to do so because the need is, is bad. I pick up food every Monday and Tuesday at various stores here in the area, in the Fontana, Ranza Cucamonga, and the Highland area. And I know that there's people out there, there are stores that are also in, they're not selling and they're throwing a lot of stuff away. Like I said, there's an article on Monday's newspaper and it tells you a little bit about how the situation is throughout the whole United States as well as here in San Bernardino, Los Angeles, and all that. I, I know we have something in the agenda today that has to do with increasing something, increasing rates, but I'm not going to go into that. We had, I received a letter from the city clerk back in the start of the, the start of the year about San Bernardino increasing the rates on their store. I was not present at the time that they mentioned, I think it was in March, about the increases, something about 6.9% increase. So, being that the times are hard, like I said, if you people, if there's word out there in the public, being that we're on TV, we're on TV, that I'll be passing out feed for anybody, food for anybody that's in need on the 17th at the Romanian church between nine and two o'clock. I, when Mr. Hernandez started this program in the Bryn Mawr area, there were 65 families, I mean, they gave us food for 65 families. We would spend from eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon and we had to take food back because the demand wasn't there. It increased to 80 some and 90 some and when I entered the, when I asked permission for the Romanian church people to allow me to pass out food, they were more than willing to do so. I have food, which the food bank allows me, for 120 families. And I have volunteers to show up before eight o'clock and we package the food together. So by nine o'clock, we're ready to open and pass out food. 120 families. By 10:15, I'm out of food. I'm out of food. And the food bank will not allow me anymore because the demand in all the agencies, the demand in all the agencies is high. There's a big need. This pa, this letter that they sent me monthly gives me a list of all the agencies, of all the agencies in the San Bernardino County. Needles, Barstow, 29 Pompso Marine Base, they come and they, they receive food from the food bank. 93 agencies in all. And we're in need. Thank you.
Hey Fred, just a quick question. On the, on the food bank issue, is the food bank a 501(c)(3) where if people want to donate to it and get a receipt, they can do that?
They could do so by calling the, the telephone number there at the food bank. They can call, call them and find out how they can receive a receipt, how they can donate money as well so that the program can continue.
Do you happen to know the number if anybody's watching or is there way to the city, we can post it? Because it's, it's a good message to get out, but...
The number is 909-723-1581.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your efforts, thank you. I do have one slip on a non-agenda item and that's for Esther Viscara. We have your address on the slip, so you don't need to state that unless you choose to. And please bring us your concern, we can't take action on it since it's not on the agenda, but now is your time for the next three minutes or so.
We have this property in Willis Drive and we had that since 1966, it's over 40 years. And that road is owned by a private property who is now in Canada. And I think I've wrote him quite a few times and at first he was answering me and then later on, there's no answer at all. So I presume maybe the, those who inherit the land just didn't answer me. But I have also written to the development department here in the city and also the city, city attorney. And they tell me about this eminent domain, that you had to buy the land. But I just recently saw this article from Renewed and Ready. It's published by the Pacific Press Publishing Association in Nampa, Idaho. And it says here, "Eminent domain, a doctrine granting governmental entities, federal, state or local, they grant power to take private real estate for public use with or without the permission of the owner." Because I, I got a letter about three years ago from the engineer here and he said that, that there's no money because they had to buy the land. And we had the same experience in Ritchie Canyon. Part of our land was taken by this Riverside County and they paid us some money then. But then this one, I, I just want to know more about this because the place, that Willis Drive is just so dusty. There's hardly any rain here and the, there's about 18 homes, like eight homes in each side. And then when they go around there, there's a dead end because this is already the property, the south side is the property of the VA hospital. And it's so dusty and people there just get sick, asthma and bronchitis. And not only that, instead of us watering our lawns well, we water the, the road instead. So then we cannot really keep a good looking lawn. So I just want to know if something can be done with that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your concern is one we're well aware of. We can't obviously take any actions since it's not on the agenda, but any comments from staff or city attorney at this point with any further developments?
We've worked on that problem for several years and the gentleman that owns the property is located in Canada, he's very uncooperative and we tried to get him to donate the property and we still have to purchase it, even, even using eminent domain, it has to be purchased.
I, I will promise you, we will look at this again and see with, what we can do with all the options that are currently there. Beyond that, it's probably not appropriate tonight to get into further details, but we will definitely work on this item and be in communication with you and see if we can ever get to a more satisfactory solution. Thank you for bringing this up. I do have one more slip, Richard Cunehara. And again, have address on the slip, so it's optional if you choose to give that and appreciate your comments.
City council members, Mr. Mayor, my name is Richard Cunehara. A few weeks ago, I sorrowfully attended the memorial service for Lem Lealoha. I had the privilege of meeting Lem for the first time a couple of years ago when he was campaigning for Loma Linda City Council. He was a moderate who wanted the best for Loma Linda. He wanted quality homes for our employees at the Veterans Administration, Loma Linda University and Medical Center, and all the other employees within our city. He wanted quality homes so that these hardworking people and future employees in our city, particularly our, our growing world-class institution, would not have to commute long distances but could live five minutes away and spend time with his or her family instead of commuting. Several speakers at Lem's service mentioned his run for city council. This reminded me of the three times I met Lem. I did not get to know him really well, but the three times I met Lem to pick up campaign signs for my friends' homes, I came to understand him as being forthright, upright, and a straight talker. Lem told me about a number of incidents where his campaign signs were ripped out, torn, thrown into the bushes, or just stolen, or when untruths were written or spoken about him, or when other candidate's signs were placed on the edges of private property without the owner's permission, or the time Lem was placing signs along Beaumont Avenue on private property with the owner's permission and a fairly tall and lean blond man in a white pickup came up to Lem and yelled at him, told him to take the signs down or he would come back with a gun. Lem took the high road. He did not write, he did write an article for the Loma Linda News to clarify the facts with truth, but he did not name, call, distort, or slander. He behaved as a Christian. In my few conversations with Lem, it became clear that both other candidates and us ordinary citizens did not clearly understand the rules of engagement, so to speak. Some people were told political signs were to be, were not to be placed on public right of ways such as street corners or along sidewalks outside of a homeowner's block wall. Yet we saw many signs in these locations. One homeowner without a sidewalk along Lawton was told if he placed one political sign on his lawn, other people could put up signs on his lawn because the city right of way extend, extended 10 or even 15 feet onto his lawn from the curb. Some cities have adopted some simple rules to follow during political campaigns. It would be prudent for Loma Linda to form perhaps a temporary committee to draw up simple and clear guidelines to follow. In the past, city workers were asked to pick up signs that were in gross violation. The ro, the rules would be equally, should be equally clear to citizens and to code enforcement and adopted by the city council. Perhaps this could be a small legacy to a good man who wanted things done right in a just and kind manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And again, I think it's entirely appropriate to recognize the contributions to this community that Mr. Lealoha gave to this community in various roles and most recently as planning commissioner. And I think your suggestions to honor him are excellent and something we will, we will look forward to seeing what we can do before the next round of election activity. Any other items not on the agenda? If not, we will turn time over for the moment to Councilman Peterson who had someone that I believe he would like to introduce.
Good evening. We have a visitor here tonight that I want to introduce to everybody, Dr. Lazarus Ndeko, who is a, is from Kenya. He is here in Loma Linda for a very important purpose. On Sunday, he will, he is here to see his wife graduate from Loma Linda University with her doctorate in nutrition, where she has been studying here in our fine town for almost four years now from the country of Kenya. And Dr. Ndeko is a professor at the University of Eastern Africa in Beraritan. And I, my wife and I had a chance to meet him and his wife first a few years ago when we were teaching out there at Beraritan for two summers in our off-campus program. He's visiting in town and I just want to publicly welcome him. He wanted to come and see what city council was like and so he's here tonight. He's, his, his area of expertise is educational communication and technology. And we took him for a drive around town and showed him the fire department the other day and his first comment was how quiet our streets were as we were driving. So his wife will be graduating, Helen, and they'll be going back to Kenya again where they will be teaching. And again, I want to just extend a big welcome to you, to our, to our city and glad you came to visit. Also accompanying him tonight, I should just mention, is my wife Eileen, who on this coming Thursday, we will be married 42 years. So. And I should say, that was the smartest decision I ever made.
Well, welcome to our council meeting and congratulations in advance. Our next item is a little update on Southern California Edison and State of the Utility. We've had, you know, State of the Union, State of the State, State of the City, so it seems appropriate to have a State of the Utility update here. And we have Beverly Powell with us here tonight and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start out with something very, very pleasant. It gives me great pleasure to share this plaque with the city of Loma Linda. Jarb has actually had it in his possession for about a month, but it's a certificate of appreciate, excuse me, of participation where the city of Loma Linda participated in Edison's Demand Response Program. And this is where the city actually saved energy and also saved money. So here's the exact wording. "We are proud to partner with the city of Loma Linda to save energy, save money, and help protect the environment." In 2008, the city of Loma Linda's participation resulted in a reduction of 544,264 pounds of carbon greenhouse gas emissions. The city's continued participation in Edison's Demand Response and Energy Efficiency Program helps ensure power reliability for the community and defers the need to build new generation plants. So again, Jarb, we really, really enjoyed working with you and we will continue that in 2009. In fact, more energy saved and more money saved forthcoming, which we'll be able to share with the city a little further down the line. So thank you very much, Jarb. I'm going to give this back to you so you can hang it up?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll put it here. Oh, yes. Okay. There you go. Okay. Second duty, and this one I really, really am, am going to enjoy too. I have to introduce council to, and staff to somebody who is going to replace me as the Edison rep to, to Loma Linda. This is Linda LaPierre Ortiz.
It's really a pleasure to meet all of you, thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. No one can replace Beverly, but I will try really hard to live up to her good work.
Trust me, I'm putting, I'm leaving the city in good hands. I'm not leaving the company, I just have, somebody retired, I've got their territory. So I have new cities and Linda's going to take the cities that I currently have. And like I said, it'll be a smooth transition, you know? I say, I'm still in the Redlands office, Linda will be in the Redlands office. It'll be a smooth transition, she'll have an opportunity to meet you all. And I honestly, I am leaving you in good hands. I got a chance to select her. Okay? Alrighty. Thank you, Linda. She hasn't officially started though, I mean, it's two more weeks before she comes on board, but I just thought, hey, let's get you going soon. Okay? All right. Now, the presentation that I want to share. It's just a kind of a Edison update and I'll certainly be open to, to any questions. In last month, the California Independent System Operator, the ISO, and they're the ones who ensure that there's enough electricity in, coming through California's grids. And so anyway, they said that this summer, we will have enough electricity, don't worry about blackouts throughout the states or rotating outages. And they said primarily, two reasons why we'll have, won't have any problems with energy shortages. One, 1,500 new generation is coming online, 1,500 megawatts. And rule of thumb, one megawatt will serve about 700 to 750 homes. So of that 1,500 of new generation that's coming online, 155 megawatts are renewable power. So it's wind, wind power and solar power that's coming online as part of this new generation. And then the other thing is downturn in the economy. You have fewer manufacturers running full steam, especially during the peak hours. Peak hours are, peak business hours are 10:00 AM in the morning to 6:00 PM. And so again, because of the, you know, slowdown in the economy, you also have a slowdown in, in energy use. But again, rotating outages are not expected at all this year. Southern California Edison is a franchise utility company. All that means is we do pay millions to the cities and counties where we, where we have facilities and we're also regulated, regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. Now, the, as far as the, the, the money that we pay to the cities to do business, April 15th, every year, Edison wire transfers money into the city's account. We did that on time for the city of Redland, I mean, I'm sorry, we did it at Redlands, but Loma Linda, I'm sorry, I've got so many cities, I have like, I think it's what, 10 cities? Yeah. So confused where I am, but it's, like I said, help is coming on the way so I can just concentrate on a few areas. No, no. Well, wait a minute, you know what? No, I didn't. No. You got, you got yours. Yours was, let's see, going by memory, 211,000 and some change. So that was a wire transfer to you on time. Edison is doing work to upgrade our facilities. We do have aging facilities. In fact, in one of your neighboring cities, I have, we're doing a project starting in September where we've got to replace some towers and two of those towers were built in 1911. So, well, we've been around for 120 years. So we actually have about $80 billion worth of work that we should be doing, but like I said, over time, we'll have to get to, through to it. But in the next five years, we've, the Public Utilities Commission, like I said, which regulates us, has approved us doing $20 billion worth of upgrades. And so right in your backyard here in Loma Linda, this is one of the places where we will be doing some upgrades. This picture comes from Hinckley, you know, the street on Hinckley? So this picture was taken from Hinckley and looking northward out to Beaumont Avenue?
South.
South? Oh yeah. Okay, south. Because north will put you on Barton Road. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. So we'll be working on this in 2010 to upgrade these lines. This will be a 12 million dollar project.
How, those towers you're showing right now, when were those built?
I don't know.
Now, the 1911 towers, are those in Loma Linda?
That's, no. That's a neighboring city.
Okay, alright.
A neighboring city.
Okay.
Okay.
They look pretty good for 1911.
No, no, no. The neighbor, no, not, not in Loma Linda.
May I ask the upgrade on those towers, are they going to look similar or different? Are you changing the towers out or do we know what?
I don't know what the design will be yet right now, but they'll probably, if they're, if they're not lattice towers, there may be steel poles. if they're not lattice towers, there may be steel poles. I'm just judging by a reconductor project that is going to start in September, next door to you. Okay? Pardon me? Line, yeah, at the top. Yeah. It's like adding another freeway lane. That would cost far more than the 12 million dollars, which you understand does roll in the rates. Okay? Yeah. Yeah, flying your kite is probably not a good idea. Not in the lines, not, not in this area. Uh, not at this level, not, not, not this circuit. You, the smaller ones, where we have 33 KV's volts, at this time, really, at this, this is far more expensive and, and far more dangerous. When you, when you put, I mean, this high voltage underneath the ground, then you're creating environmental hazards, plus it's, it's far more dangerous. Anything under the ground, you're more susceptible to explosions, you know, with voltages as high.
So, Ms. Powell, please continue. Sorry, we all kind of sidetracked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Just so you know, again, this investment that we're making, this $20 billion investment that we're making over time, that doesn't, that does increase rates, okay? And if you've noticed in your bills, I mean, there was, there was something that notified you that in April 2009, your bill went up, it was increased by two, on the average across, for residential customers, was 2.5 percent, which comes out to about, it was about $2 more per month in your bill. Okay? So, and that's on the average. I mean, usage is, you know, if you go up or, or down, then, you know, that'll fluctuate. But on the average, your bill, starting in April, is up about $2, $2 more a month. So these are some of the programs that we have to help people. Energy Assistance Funds, that's a, once a year, if you qualify, you can ask for $100 to pay your bill, you know, to go towards your bill. And, but there are certain locations where the Energy Assistance Fund, where that money can be garnered. The closest to, to Loma Linda is in Redlands, at the Salvation Army, at 838 North Alta Street. And there you can.
We're having a little technical difficulty with sound. What was the address again for assistance, if you need it with your electric?
Okay. Energy Assistance Fund, the closest location to get that $100 to help you with your bill is at the Salvation Army, 838 North Alta, ALTA Street in Redlands. Okay?
Thank you.
Care, that means California Alternate Rates for Energy. That's if you fit into a certain income bracket, the low-income bracket, you can get 20% off your bill monthly. Energy Efficiency Rebates for things that you purchase, you know, pools, air conditioning upgrades, all these energy-efficient appliances, you can get rebates on those. Energy Management Assistance, that's also income-qualified, where people can get free refrigerators. Again, all income-qualified, you can get air conditioners, again, that, that can be, that's free as well. Medical baseline, you can get discount on your bill if you're dependent on medical equipment that has to be plugged in. And the Summer Discount Program, you can get a discount on, on that. That's if, where Edison pays you for the privilege of having to take you offline, you know, shut off your power. It won't cut off your compressor, but shut off your power in the event that we need it. I've been on the program for several years now. I've never been, been cut off. So again, most people aren't, because the residential customers, we're the last ones. I mean, they'll hit, they'll go to big businesses first that have big contracts to save money. But again, that's another way of saving money. Yes, sir?
That's for your, sorry. That's for your air conditioner?
Yes.
Now, I, I have a question on that. How many people take advantage of that? Because I do, and it is a savings, and I appreciate that from Edison. I'm just wondering, what percent of people really, really do take advantage of that?
Oh, I don't know. I was in, in Ucaipa, I was in Ucaipa, and it's less than 20% in Ucaipa. And the only reason I know about Ucaipa, because I was there in May, and we had a booth set up, and the person who was working with, the booth with me had, had numbers for that particular city. But it, I mean, it was just.
I mean, I've had it for the last 20 years, and I, I can't remember if I ever, I can't ever remember being inconvenienced by having my air conditioner shut off during the summertime, and it is a considerable savings. I can't imagine why everybody wouldn't do that.
Well, I don't know. Maybe it's.
I mean, I would encourage everybody to do it, because it's available. I appreciate Edison doing that. It's, it's available to everybody.
Yeah, you can save $200 a, a year at least on it.
That's a lot of money.
So, I mean, rarely do they cut, cut, cut residential customers off. And then finally, I'm going to give you Linda's phone number and mine, in case you need us. Okay? And I'm sorry if I took up too much time. Okay, any questions or?
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Powell?
I just wanted to commend you recently, most residents don't know, that not all the power, not all the light poles are owned by the city, some of them are owned by you. And we had some issues along Mountain View not long ago, and I wanted to thank you for taking care of that. I had brought it to Edison's attention, and it was actually taken care of within 24 hours. And I think that was great that you guys were able to respond so quickly, and I just wanted to show my appreciation for that.
All right. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you on behalf of Council and the community for your many years of excellent service, and we'll miss you, but congratulate you. I'm sure I'm moving on to another post, so anyway, thanks. Thanks again for your involvement in the community.
All right. Thank you.
Since I have the bully pulpit, the one other thing I just can't help bring up when we talk about electricity and utilities and so forth, you know, there's been discussions, especially when electric rates were taking significant jumps a few years ago, some cities jumping in to try and generate electricity themselves and get into the utility business. And I think we're all aware of one city, Victorville, that attempted that and has gotten into significant financial peril. Still here occasionally, some citizens, well, you know, why doesn't the city do something innovative, like trying to do that? But frankly, I think we've been a lot better off not to have done that. Some of the older cities that have done this years ago, like Riverside, have made it work well, but I think it's probably been a good decision that we've chosen to go with some solar electric generation capabilities on City Hall and not tried to form a city-owned and run utility. But that's my two cents on the bully pulpit. All right, let's move on to next item. And that next item is modifying water rates effective July of this year through June 30, 2011. And there's a couple of components to this. I guess we'll start with just a staff report related to this item. And is this for you, Mr. Tappett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little background is, is back in 1995, the city did issue a $10 million bond to purchase the land and construction of the water reservoir and refinance existing loan. And the bond is required that the city have to guarantee the bond, and, and especially have the, required as a city have an annual net operation avenue of at least 120% of the annual debt service to avoid a technical default and to maintain operational and financial stability of our water system. And in 19, in 2007, the city did review the rate and proposed a rate increase of 6% for the first three years and 4% of the following two years. And during this hard economy time, we, we decided to do additional study, and the city have retained the service of CDM to help us review our current rate. And we have our consultant, Mr. Grant Hoag, with CDM to give a brief report on the, the study he did. Grant?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Council, members of the public. My name is Grant Hoag. I'm with the firm CDM, Camp Dresser &amp; McKee. And we prepared for your city three years ago, our, a water rate study, and more recently have updated it. I regret to say that unlike the prior presentation, the information that I bring is not quite so upbeat, in that we have identified a need to, as Jarb mentioned, accelerate some rate increases that were originally identified two years ago. This slide illustrates and summarizes, summarizes the, the key issues that are affecting the city's water enterprise. As you can see, it, it shows in each row the current year and the next two years of financial conditions. The columns are the revenues from customer bills, millions, other revenues, the city's costs, operational and, and debt service-related, and finally, the ending cash balance. There are a couple of key numbers I want to illustrate in here that, that represent the financial challenges that the water utilities experiencing. First, under the other revenue column, you can see that our, the current revenues are $1.3 million, but they are dropping to .2 million over the next two, three years. Most of these revenues are represented by your connection fees that are generated from growth-related connections to the city's water utility. And just as we understand that the economy has, is in a, something of a recession, so is growth slowed to a crawl here, and as a result, the revenues from these new connections has declined significantly. As Jarb mentioned, the 1995 bond has certain covenants that the city is required to comply with, including certain revenues available for paying debt. Unfortunately, the bond was issued in part to finance growth-related facilities, and as such, a significant portion of the annual debt service was funded from the connection fees that you, that we now see declining significantly. As a result, the, the decline in, in those revenues has had to be made up from other sources, primarily from customer bills. This slide also illustrates that the city's Public Works has made an effort, a significant effort on two parts, to reduce its current and projected expenditures over these trying times. These efforts are primarily temporary in nature, just as we believe the economic situation will work its way through, and we will ultimately return to our original economic condition. You can see that the, that the operating costs, the O&amp;M costs for the water utility are declining from the current 4.5 million a year to 3.9 million per year, two years out. This is done through deferring any services, maintenance, and repairs that, that can be safely deferred to, to future years. Also, you can see in the column, debt and projects, that, that current level of expenditures is $1 million. Now it will decline to .8, but increase to 1.1 million. Debt service on that, that $10 million bond is increasing from 600,000 to 900,000 per year in this projection period. This is due primarily to the fact that, that the debt service is on an adjustable rate, and as interest rates have inclined, have increased, so has the amount of debt service. Finally, and almost as important as the issue of, of the debt coverage requirements, is the water utility's cash balance, the last column. You can see that, that currently, we're projected to be down to $200,000 by the end of this fiscal year, and over the projection period, it's, it's going to be going up only slightly to As I'll illustrate in the next three slides, these, the two issues of the cash balance and the need to, to fund the debt are, are the two drivers for the proposed rate increases. These proposed rate increases include 11.9% effective this July, followed by a 5.2% in July of 2010. In my opinion, the first rate increase is essential to avoid a default on the loan. That is to say, you're required by the covenants that you have signed with that debt to maintain a coverage ratio of 1.5, 1.25, and this 11.7% rate increase is the minimal necessary to make that coverage. In the following year, we recommend a 5.2% increase to arrest the continued decline in cash reserves in the water utility. In fact, if you choose to increase the 5 point, decrease the 5.2%, any lower, you will find yourself essentially using up all the reserves within a, a year or a, or two. So both increases are quite essential. The result of these two rate increases is illustrated in this slide for your inside-city water rates. As you can see, the bimonthly service charge will increase roughly a dollar and a half for each of the two increases, from the current $20.67 up to $24.29 two years out. By the same percentage increases, the volumetric charges will, will be increasing for your 0 to 10, 100 cubic foot allocation or tier, it will go from 98 cents up to $1.15. The impact on the, the projected customer bills, and here is a typical customer, who, a residential customer who's using 30 units or 100 cubic feet bimonthly. The bimonthly bill for this customer will increase from, from roughly $57 bimonthly up to $67 bimonthly two years out. These increases, again, in our opinion, are essential and will create some hardship on some customers. However, it is rare that I make a presentation to a council such as yours where I, I've identified the bare essential financial plan, as opposed to one that will provide a sustainable, healthy water utility. What I'm saying is that the projections, the recommendations I have provided for you will not put the water utility on a path to recovery by developing cash reserves at the level that it needs for permanent operations, nor will it provide the level of capital improvements that, that Jarb has been doing in the, in the past five years to affect asset replacements at a level that is necessary. However, because the city is under economic problems right now, we felt that it would be best to provide the bare minimum necessary to keep the water utility functioning. be best to provide the bare minimum necessary to keep the water utility functioning for the next two years. That completes my summary of our, of our present, of our analysis. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
My first question is probably one that Jarb can comment on. Going back to your first slide, or the second slide, I think it is, in the reduction in cost, O&amp;M costs from 4.5 to 3.9, you made the comment that some of that can be achieved by putting off some maintenance and replacement of parts. Isn't doing that, and we're talking about the budget, the whole budget of the city now, isn't doing that equivalent to dipping into our reserves? I mean, we have, in the city, in our city budget, we have cash reserves. We also have reserves in terms of good maintenance, up-to-date equipment, things that are working right. And if you don't, at some point, change the oil in the car, you're going to pay for that down the road with some bigger expenses. And is it smart to put off, in effect, it's equivalent to dipping into our reserves to not do what needs to be done? I, I'm really proud of the way, of the, of the condition of the maintenance of our city all the way around, from the streets to the water systems, to the sewer, I don't care where it is. We've got a top-notch city when it comes to taking care of it, taking care of our assets in comparison to just about any city that I see around us. And I, I'm, I'm really concerned about letting that go in any way. Maintenance is incredibly important. It's the easiest thing to let go for a year and not do anything about it. But believe me, down the road, you will pay for it.
May I answer that question, sir? I'm happy to say that during the past eight years, the Public Works have been doing a lot of replacement of the, of the old water main that need to be repaired. So we have done that. We also have, also did the repair to our sewer, I mean, our water wells and pumps and the reservoir. And we also, in addition, I propose that we would like to use RDA, part of RDA money to retrofit the reservoir for the next fiscal year.
Just to follow up on that point, do you have any rough projections to get us to the quotes, healthy position that you think we should be in, assuming economic activity stays flat like it is now? Would it be instead of 11, 30%? Any rough estimates on that?
No, sir. We, we did not develop a projection beyond the, the current condition. However, it was, it's quite obvious from the, the cash flows that as, when you went from a growth rate of 300 plus, roughly 300 new dwellings per year down to 10 or so, that these are atypical times. These are tough times. And the reduction in, or deferment, if you will, in, in the level of maintenance that that has been in the past for a couple of years seemed completely appropriate.
I think, Councilman.
That's fine if you, that's, go ahead.
One, one question briefly. When the university adds new buildings, do we gain any other revenue from that?
No, sir. The university has its own water system.
Okay. So like Centennial, we, so we don't provide any water to the university at all?
Not, not to the facility.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions, and you may be able to answer this, you may not be able to. Do you happen to know what our debt, debt balance is on that $10 million bond? What's is left?
I don't know. The outstanding principle, no.
You don't, okay. And the other question, are you only taking into account for the next two years as to if we keep repeating what we repeated this last year, meaning instead of having 300 some hookups, we only had 14, according to your report? Is this reporting into account the same pattern for the next two years?
The, the scenario that we have developed is a pretty pessimistic one. And assumes that the most recent trends, the most recent being the last year or so, continue for another two years. And because we truly don't know what the, what will be happening two years out, it would be premature to do a normal forecast of five years, which is what we typically do. Because the, the range of possibilities goes anywhere from, is, is likely to be better, but we don't have that information.
So then it's safe to say that if things continue to be bad two years from now, we're going to be looking at this again and having to reassess our rates significantly?
It is appropriate to, to update the rate projection, yeah. You will no longer have to worry about falling into technical default on debt service, even if you can make the calls. I am very uncomfortable that the water utility has such low cash reserves. And it is unfortunate that Jarb has had to defer a lot of capital projects that are ultimately necessary to avoid 100-year-old telephone poles and the like, just are the, are the equivalent of in your pipelines. Because somewhere decades from now, you will start to experience main breaks that result from, from not replacing these pipelines at a timely, in a timely fashion. But you can, you can comfortably get by for several years, just, just as we all can comfortably get by by changing our oil every 5,000 miles instead of 3,000 miles like Jeffy Lube tells us.
My concern is that we as a city need to be very careful about taking out bonds based on projected growth. And that's one of the things that we would not even be allowed to do in the RDA, for example. The RDA can only take bonds based on what's already in the ground versus what may or may not happen. And that's unfortunately, one of the things we find ourselves in. That was a decision that was made in 1995, and here we are 12 years later, and things have turned out, turned around significantly. And unfortunately, we're all having to pay a higher price for that. It's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. The, the original bonds provided the, the vehicle to, to build expansion or development, expansion-related facilities to serve the development that came in over the last 15-odd years. And so it was, it is appropriate to take certain risks. Unfortunately, we're suffering, going to suffer for a couple of years as a result.
Thank you.
Couple of questions I had. You mentioned potential technical default. Obviously, we as a city and utility have the money already, don't advocate, and I don't think any of us are planning to not live up to our obligations. But frankly, what would be the impact if we're in technical default since we already have the money?
Technical default refers to, not to the inability to pay our debt, which we certainly can without any trouble, but rather not to demonstrate on paper that we had a 1.25 coverage ratio on the debt that we are, that we have in, in any fiscal year. The impact of, of being in that technical default, or not being able to show the 1.25 ratio, is that essentially, the rating agencies will look poorly upon any future debt by the water enterprise. Moreover, a line of credit that maybe, may cost the city or the water enterprise next to nothing would, would go up. And therefore, the cost would increase somewhat, the administrative costs of operating the utility.
And I assume, as is very likely, as our RDA issues bonds, which is its function, I would assume that might potentially adversely affect what interest rates those would obtain, since I'm sure bond underwriters would look at the total city finances, including covering other bonds. So I think you're, you're right. There is reason for caution. The other question I had, I'm just slightly puzzled on, you know, the interest costs going up about 33% in the next two years, and that being attributed to interest rates going up, you know, over the last few years, the last, I checked, we're pretty much at historic lows on long and short-term interest rates. Yes, they've ticked up slightly in the last month, but I mean, looking over the last 10 years, we're pretty close to historic lows. Why, why are they projected to increase so much? Do you have a better crystal ball than the rest of us?
No, sir. If I was, if I had a better crystal ball than any of you, I would probably be retired by now. The, the short answer is I don't know. The debt service schedule was provided to, to us by the Finance Director, and I, I can't tell, give you the details of, of that cash flow.
Any comments on that, Deander?
The covenant is based upon the maximum debt service, which is at a higher rate, although the variable, the bonds are issued at a variable rate, which is adjusted every seven days. So technically, the rate is low compared to what the maximum debt service is projected on an annual basis, based upon what it potentially could be at a maximum, which is about 6%. But right now, we're paying on them, you know, the average is about 1.7% we're paying. So.
A question, a comment. Jarb, do we have excess capacity in our water system at the moment? And how big, how much excess capacity do we have?
No, no, sir. We do not. That's why we, we're in the process of drilling three wells, three new wells right now, so that we will have capacity. But then, we have to build a new reservoir to hold that extra capacity, so.
So we, we do not have a good deal of excess capacity at the moment? We do not have, we do not have an undue amount of excess capacity in our water system?
Depends on the time of the year.
Yes. In the summer, we need more water compared to the wintertime.
All right. And this is where I'm going. The implication was made a minute ago by Mr. Vapesku that we made some unwise decisions to bond this money to build water systems that we didn't need because the building wasn't coming. That's not true. That was a total misconception. We do not have excess capacity. We needed that capacity, and that's why we did it at the moment. And to say that, to imply that that was an unwise decision is, is being misleading.
I don't want to enter into debate, but the report clearly says that in order for us to meet our debt obligations, we're anticipating to have over 300 new hookups. That didn't happen. So obviously, someone made the assumption that if we did have the 300 hookups, we would be okay. Obviously, the economy took a big dive. Those hookups didn't take place. As a result, that's where we're at.
Right. But that's not an unwise decision. You can't build houses, then drill the well and put in the pipes to service them. It has to be done way ahead of time. So you have to plan ahead of time. And, and that was simply, certainly was a, not an unwise decision to make. Anybody would have made that.
I agree with our consultant. There's obviously some risk involved, and we're going to have to take some risk in order to build capacity for the anticipated growth. However, you know, all of us, as we plan forward, if we don't plan for rainy days, here we are, worst-case scenario, and we're in it. And I'm afraid, I don't want to be a pessimist, but I think two years from now, we're going to find ourselves in the same situation, because I don't believe that the situation we're in is going to resolve itself in two years. I believe that, I've talked to a number of individuals, the, the growth pattern in this country is going to be stalled for some time to come. And I think it's important for us to be aware of that and plan for it, because we're going to be affected as a city. And sometimes, it affects us personally with our pocketbooks, but not having enough work and things like that. But then, pretty soon, we're going to find out we as a city need to increase the fees of our residents. And I think the residents do kind of need to be made aware of the fact that we're not out of the woods yet.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't, I don't know if this mic's working. I guess it's somewhat, okay. One of the, one of the things that adds to the demand for water as residential, there's always another demand, which is business. And I know, Ovi, some of the things I know you're attempting to work on is to bring more business development into the city. And that would also demand water. So if, you know, for example, if you try to bring commercial into the town, you have to have water available for commercial. So if you should bring a hotel in, you know, through the RDA or something, you know, one of the workings you, you get involved with, you're going to have to have water for that service as well, correct? So that's the type of thing, you have to build capacity for, for many purposes. And that's why the, the town has to have adequate water. I mean, obviously, this was done 95, it's done quite a few years ago. That's looking ahead a decade and a half.
Any other questions for our consultant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any further staff report at this time on this item? All right. This is a public hearing, and I have at least one slip of someone that would like to speak on this issue. I would like to officially open the public hearing related to modifying water rates as listed on our agenda. The first slip I have is Cheryl Orate. Sorry, I may not say that right, but please come forward and if you could, limit to about three minutes or less. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. This time, this has been my first council meeting here, but just listening to what's going on with the 1995 debt that has seemed to have gotten the city of Loma Linda into some trouble, we don't even know what the balance due is, and we're making a projection. I'd like to hear what the balance is before we start looking at the projection that we've already got out to raise the rates for the water, as well as for the meters. I would like to request that there be an extension before this is voted on by the council members or whatever. I understand that there was only like 19 responses for the proposal of the water increase for the negative, and I don't believe that the residents of Loma Linda understand, nor want to take the time to take action and write the letters. But I feel that if they're addressed on a personal basis, that they would take the time to sign against having the rate increase. So I would beg the council for an extension of time to allow me to address the residents for this increase, so that they understand that 19 people alone can't battle this. And with the economy the way it is, and people losing their jobs and everything else, this is a really bad time for an increase in rates. We, seems like we're getting hit every which way we go. And now we're being nickel and dime to death with increases on this and increases on other city areas as well. And I would just like the council to allow more time so that we could get the signatures that we need to avoid this increase in the water rates. I mean, in the summertime, my bills are not the $56 that I saw up there. I have one and three-quarter acres, and my bills are a lot more than that to keep the grounds wet and everything for fire. I don't, you know, the first thing that's going to go with the people that can't afford to pay their water debts is going to be their greenery. And then when that goes, so does the name for City of Loma Linda, because nobody's going to want to live here, because everything looks dead, and people are not taking care of their properties, because they can't afford to pay the water. They're paying, they're having to pay their grocery bill and pay gas to get to work if there's lucky enough to have two of them working in the same residence. The 11.7%, and then you add the 5.2% on top of that in 2010, you're looking at almost a 17% over a two-year period. And I would like a little bit more answers as to why all of a sudden that this is becoming an issue here in 2009, when the bond was done in 1995. I don't know who the projected company was at that time, but they did the city a disservice not giving them the correct information. It's not like the rates haven't gone up. But, I mean, I've only lived in the city since 2004, but I just don't feel that people are going to be able to pay these water bills. And with new business, if we're trying to get new business into the city of Loma Linda, that should offset some of our debt ratio that we owe on the bond. that should offset some of our debt ratio that we owe on the bond. So I would like to request an extension in order to try to get to more of the residents on a personal basis, so that they understand what is going on. If they don't want to sign, then that's fine. They know what they're getting themselves into. But too many of the people get it, they can't be bothered with it. Their reaction is, the city council is gonna do what they wanna do anyway, so why, why waste my time anymore, is the way people look at it. So, um, I would like to request an extension on that proposal.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next individual I have a slip for is, um, Professor Al Vandoris. Sorry again if I mispronounced that. And if you could try and limit it to about three minutes, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Professor Albert Vandoris, I'm also a World War II veteran, and we own a house on Lawton Street, here in Loma Linda. And it was a, prior to it becoming a rental, it was purchased for that purpose. And we were told, to the tune of over $100, to have the water turned on, so that we could show prospective renters or rentees how the water works. Yet, we had to pay for trash, we had to pay for sewer, we had to pay a full shot for the water, the cubic feet. And I believe that that was, that is an error. I taught contract law to universities in the 70s and 80s, and there are to most of the statutes on the books, and I'm sure that my distinguished colleague here will testify, that there are exclusion clauses. We find a notable, noticeable absence of an, an exclusion clause in the water rates. There should be a, a concession made for people who own property, who just merely want the water turned on to show prospective renters. There was no water consumed, there was no trash, there was no yard cleaning up, which we should have done. I'm handicapped, and we lived in Santa Barbara at the time. And it's inconvenient to come all the way from Santa Barbara, three hours driving, 165 miles west of here, to come here and mow the lawn, or to water it, at our discretion. And I think that you should put into your books an exclusion clause for people who are homeowners, and are showing the property to be, to potential renters. You know, it's ridiculous that we have to pay. As a World War II veteran, I see an awful lot of Nazism in that clause, in that structure. And I say this with certification and qualification. We fought the Nazis, we defeated them, they surrendered. Now it seems as though they've come back and they've entered their, their swastika mark on the books. And I, for one, and my wife, for one, are very disgruntled about this situation. And I think that you need to incorporate an exclusionary clause in that ruling, that for people who are turning on their service only to show to renters, don't pay the garbage, don't pay the trash, don't pay the, the sewer, and don't pay for a full shot. Nobody was taking showers there. And I'm not sure if I'm ready to rest my case on it, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask that you consider this, either at this session or some other future session, and revise that. I think it's ridiculous that you're dipping into our pockets, and yet you were gonna dip some more, according to his survey. In 1946, when I was at Letterman Hospital in the Presidio of San Francisco, right across Amalcatras and, and further distant from San Quentin, there was a survey among convicts. And they found that the typical convict, uh, lifer was five foot six to five foot, uh, or to six foot two or three, had dark hair, had pot marks in the face. And my commanding officer came to me, and he showed me the report, and he says, hey, Sergeant, he says, you'd make a good convict. I said, well, I haven't killed anybody yet. And he showed it to me. Surveys only skim the top. They don't really dig deep into the hearts and the minds of the people who are consumers. We're consumers. I feel gouged by having to pay over $100 a month for the several months that the house was vacant, and we only showed it to tenants, or prospective renters, rather, and yet we had to pay the full shot. I'm sure, in the dictionary, there is a name for that. I have a few names, but since we're on TV and we're in public here, I will reserve them. But I petition you and ask that you consider having an exclusionary clause in your constitution, or in your bylaws, or by whatever rules and regulations you are governed, to put an exclusionary clause in there to people who have rental properties, and they want to turn on service to, to, to show it. We didn't pay any gas bills, we didn't pay any, uh, we did have gas, I'm sorry, electric, but we didn't have any, there was no consumption, there was nothing going over the meters, except a flick of the switch to show the bathroom, or the bedroom, or such other rooms. And that's it. I have nothing more to say, and I'm gonna leave this up to your conscience. This is America, not Nazi Germany.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, the next slip I have is Richard Cunehara. I will point out just the one item, uh, one thing, uh, we have actually reduced in the last year, has been trash rates. I will admit, that's the exception to the rule, but we have done that.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, I was wondering, is it appropriate to ask some questions?
You can use your three minutes, I think, any way you choose to.
I'm just trying to get a grasp of what this bond situation, bond issue situation is. And I was wondering, is there a projection when this bond will be paid off, the $10 million plus, I assume, interest? Does anyone have that?
Anyone from staff help us out on that?
I believe the, the length of the bond was for 25 years, 25 to 30 years.
And I believe, uh, part of that bond issue was for purchasing, it says land, but I think that's, refers to the 80 acres between Redlands Boulevard and Mission Road?
No, that was out here in the South Hills.
In the South Hills?
For the site of the, uh, underground tank and so forth, related facilities, is my recollection.
Okay. And so with, um, uh, how much land was purchased?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Is the land at the, at the end of Mountain View where we, where we built the reservoir?
Reservoir, okay. It was just for the land for the reservoir only?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may comment on the reservoir issue, I was on council at that time, and actually I was in the minority. There were, um, discussions whether to go with the steel tank or concrete tank. The concrete tank that we built that's underground was a lot more expensive, but has less upkeep. I think I probably was wrong, uh, in retrospect, and I'm glad we spent the extra probably better off in the long run. So that is one thing, costs more upfront, but I think probably was better off, anyway.
Um, now, the city does own approximately, I believe, 80 acres between Mission Road and Redlands Boulevard. Uh, if the city is able to utilize that land in some way, sell it, uh, have development occur on it, is that one means for the city to generate revenues to help pay off the bond, or is that a possibility?
I'll ask staff if they care to respond.
The property's owned by the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency could, if it chose, uh, put proceeds from the sale of those lands towards the bonds, if it chose to do so.
And if there is development of, uh, homes on that area, that would generate funds to help, I guess, um, it would come under other revenue, because there would be connections?
Although, if, I will respond to that. You know, it is very clear with state law that any new development, the development fees have to be, uh, I get tired of that word, there has to be the nexus between the costs and, and what is allowable development fees. You know, there's always, it's tough to get to the exact figure, but it's not like we're gonna make some huge profit, um, with any of those fees. It's true, you have other ongoing, um, um, water charges that, you know, help amortize some systems. But again, uh, over, uh, next 50 years, uh, it's probably not gonna make a huge difference, depending on, uh, what we have developed. But, you know, there's a lot of ways to look at that, and there will be some immediate benefits, but long-term, it, it, I think balances out.
From the consultant, it, my understanding is, and other revenue, the decrease from 1.3 to projected 0.2 million revenue, two years from now, is, uh, to a large extent, decreasing the connection fees because of the recession? Uh-huh. My understanding is, uh, as far as other revenues, decreasing from 1.3 million to, down to 2 million in the year 10, uh, 2010, 2011. Uh, the main reason for that is his projection for, uh, the fewer connection fees, and because of recession, uh, less development. So if the city is able to have, uh, more homes built to meet the needs of its citizens and workers, then there would be more revenue in other, uh, other revenue because of the connection fees?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Okay. Now, is there, um, at this point, though, there, uh, he's uncertain whether to, uh, while he doesn't want to project beyond 2010, because it's unknown whether there will be any other kind of development. So it looks like, at least, while 1.1 million in decreased fees, uh, perhaps most of that is from, uh, fewer connection fees?
Yes.
I see.
Thank you. Councilman Peterson?
Mr. Cunehara, if I could just make a comment about that. Um, several years ago, when there was some projects proposed on, on the property, on the north side of Mission Road, um, a group in town, uh, made continual comments about the fact that if we put in these extra houses that we're gonna go in down there, that this could very well result in a water rate increase. That was, um, a message that was got out, uh, to the citizens of Loma Linda. The fact of the matter is, we're getting a rate increase because we didn't build the houses. Just exactly opposite of what the message that got out.
Yeah, and it, it just seems to occur to me that, uh, not only because of recession, but actually, the city council last, uh, session, uh, I believe approved, uh, some changes in the general plan. Um, as far as, uh, there were some graphs as far as the number of densities and so forth, of housing allowed in the area between Mission Road and Redlands Boulevard. And in one area, along Redlands Boulevard and, um, along Redlands Boulevard and along California Street, I think that area on the, uh, concept illustration that was, uh, left out, uh, but that was put forward by the planning commission, showed commercial, but 400 units of extremely low, very low, and moderately low-income housing. And I haven't met a developer yet who would be interested in doing any kind of commercial development with those type of housing. Uh, I don't think, uh, from what I, as I've spoken to some, uh, you know, those aren't gonna be the shoppers utilizing their commercial center.
Thank you. I don't have any other slips on this item. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. Um, further discussion from the council? Yes?
One question that has, has come up is whether it could be staggered. And I'd like to ask our consultant if, if the, uh, increase were split in two, or some of it deferred, so it didn't all occur at once. Would that have a detrimental effect, uh, from a timing standpoint? And I'd appreciate any comment that we could get on that.
Invite our, uh, consultant to, uh, respond.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, Grant Hoag. If you do not enact the increase, uh, that is recommended in, for July, then this, the water utility will probably, uh, fall into technical default, because the revenues for this coming fiscal year will be insufficient to, to provide that 1.25 coverage ratio. I believe we've already discussed the, uh, the costs associated with falling into technical default. Uh, it probably can, it, we can probably be assured that the actual debt can be paid, but by following the technical default, it's the city's credit, uh, our credit rating with, with the agencies would, would diminish.
Does that occur on July 1?
The proposed rate increase is for July 1, yes.
What, what I mean is that the technical default will occur on July 1, if we don't pass this tonight?
No, sir. The technical default, if it occurred at all, would occur, uh, at the, by the end of the fiscal year, I believe. That, I would hope that the finance director could confirm that, uh, the specifics of how a, uh, the, uh, agency holding the bonds or reviewing the bonds would do that. But I believe the, the process is essentially looking in arrears at, at, uh, the, uh, actual revenues versus, uh, expenditures to identify if the, at the end of the fiscal year, whether you've been able to ma- make your coverage ratios. Uh, my study, of course, was a projection, and as such, uh, had to identify sufficiency for future coverage ratios over the next three years. Um, but the actual event of technical default happens, uh, at the end of the year.
Okay. So, uh, is it, uh, your belief that the amount, uh, you're recommending, all of that is needed for the entire, uh, year? Or if that was in place, say, by the end of the year, uh, would that be sufficient?
It would be insufficient. If you, if you chose to, say, instead of do the 11.7% increase mid-year, uh, you would no longer have collected that additional monies for the first half of the year, and so you'd have to double it, if you chose to do it only for the second half of the year. Uh, and obviously, you don't want to double 11 to 22% uh, adjustment or increase, just for the benefit of deferring it for six months. So if you sought to defer a rate increase to after July, you'll have to increase it and/or re, further reduce operating, uh, expenditures below the already low level, in, in order to make that, that, uh, bond covenant.
Uh, turning to community development, Deb, is there anything that appears likely to increase the number of connections in the next 12 months above that which is projected?
Not that I'm aware of. There, we have developments that were approved on the books, and, uh, they've been taken into account in the forecasts.
Okay.
For, for the new budget year.
All right.
There aren't many.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, sorry, the, the lady who spoke and wanted us to put this off for a couple of weeks, uh, this is only a first reading, and it comes up again in two weeks, so there is time for you to...
Would I be able to meet with your attorney and get the appropriate document?
Councilman, Councilman Peterson, a few on a dialogue. We need to invite her forward. Do you, would you wish to do that?
No, it was just a piece of information, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, there, there are actually two items. One is an urgency ordinance-
Right.
-that would take effect July 1st to meet the contractual requirements.
Uh, right. Um, see, the second, so the second reading is on June 23, however, though, isn't it?
On that one.
On that one, on that one, there's no, oh, you're right.
The urgency ordinance is effective immediately.
That's, that's correct, that's correct.
It, it does require a four-fifth vote-
Yeah.
...of the city council, which means it would have to be unanimous this evening.
Yeah.
Any other, uh, discussion, uh, from council? Um, if there is none, obviously, as the city attorney has indicated, the first action, um, on our agenda would be, uh, the urgency ordinance, 2009-07. our agenda would be the urgency ordinance, 2009-07.
I move that.
That urgency ordinance has been moved. Do I hear a second?
I had a question for clarification. Is the mic on? I'm not sure I can hear myself. Okay. What is the reason we're actually putting in an urgency ordinance tonight?
The reason for the urgency ordinance is so that the rates will go into effect July 1. The normal ordinance takes effect after 30 days, which means, excuse me, the, a typical ordinance has to be introduced at a meeting, and then you cannot adopt it on second reading, we call it, until a meeting at least five days later. Typically, we do it at the next meeting, which is two weeks later. Then the ordinance goes into effect 30 days after final adoption. So by doing the urgency ordinance tonight, the ordinance is effective immediately, the rates would go into effect, as stated in the ordinance, on July 1. The second ordinance, the backup ordinance, we call that, we typically do that whenever we do an urgency ordinance, so that if for any reason we were ever challenged as to the basis for the urgency ordinance, we would have the backup regular ordinance that would kick in, so that you only are at risk for a very few days.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's any particular risk as to the urgency ordinance, but it's good practice to do both.
Are there any further findings you wish to state to go with the maker of the motion on the urgency ordinance?
I second that motion.
I have a second on that. Is there any other language the city attorney would like to include on the urgency ordinance? Or is the motion second-sufficient as listed for the urgency ordinance in our agenda?
Well, the ordinance itself includes the findings as to the nature of the urgency, and so that is included.
So that action's been moved and seconded with the findings as listed. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe it is unanimous, so it does carry with a four-fifths vote. The second action is looking at council bill 2009-08, and this first reading set for second reading. The ordinance, it's listed, it's been moved.
Second.
I hear a second. Any further discussion? I guess I'll just make a final comment from my viewpoint. I don't think any of us up here relish taking these actions. You know, we can debate lots of whys and wherefores, and what can we do, but I think, to use Councilman Peterson's analogy of deferring maintenance, not changing the oil and essence, we'd be doing this financially with where we are now, will eventually cost us more in the long run if we don't at least balance our books at the moment. Obviously, something we'll continue to look at, how we can improve our financial situation in the long run, but I support this, and I think probably all of us do reluctantly for those reasons. So, any councilman's...
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, you know, the question was raised about essentially standby service, and I realize that can't be dealt with tonight, but if down the line, staff could give a report on how standby service works, as raised by the professor, that would be of probably interest to the council and those who are maybe in the situation where they have a property that's not receiving service, you know, and if there's some way at some point in the future you could bring something back, it's a legit question.
Councilman Peterson, did you...
Yeah, I just wanted to make, we enjoy, in Loma Linda, absolutely top-notch water service. I cannot remember a time, after having lived here for 25 years, I cannot remember an hour that my water has been off. And it meets all of the quality standards. I stand in my shower every night, and I say, what a lucky guy I am. I travel around the world, and every time I get back, every time I get back to America, the first thing I say, the very first thing I say is, "I am a happy taxpayer." I get quality for what I pay for, and I tell you what, I wouldn't trade it for anything. And we don't like to see the rates go up, nobody would like to see that, but I enjoy the water that we've got.
My only comment would be that, obviously, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. We don't like the idea of having to raise any rates, regardless of how much they are. My biggest concern, and one of the reasons that I'm kind of in a position where I'm forced to raise them, is that if we don't, we will go into technical default, and as an RDA vice chairman, we do have bonding capacity of about $9 million that we hope to take out a bond here soon for some needed projects. The bond market right now is so bad that we can't even take that money. The thought of our credit rating decreasing further sends shivers down my spine, because if it makes it more difficult for us to take the additional bonds later on, it's going to make it more difficult for us to improve other infrastructure needs, and unfortunately, we must pay a little bit of a higher price now, and hopefully, as things improve, then we bring other revenue-generating businesses into the city. We hope to remedy the problem, and hopefully, you know, provide other services to our residents to make up for some of these increases. But unfortunately, sometimes we have to make difficult decisions, and this is one of those.
Jarb, just one other quick thing to add to Councilman Ziprick's request. We also maybe have a little information comparing our water rates to surrounding cities, because there's always questions, or, you know, we're way out of line, way above what others are paying. I think that'd be helpful if you can just bring back, on a future agenda, with that other item, maybe just a brief report and list some of those, so we have specific figures in front of everyone.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
One other, one other point that, while we're addressing water, there's been discussions, all of us are aware, that in other parts of Southern California, there is water rationing, such as in LA's service area. And I would appreciate any information you might be able to provide for us, whether that is something you anticipate here, or whether you believe that is something that will not be necessary. I know we depend more on our own wells, and I know that the same aquifer is drawn on by Riverside and San Bernardino, but I understand right now our aquifer's held up fairly well. But if you could maybe provide that, because there's been discussion from LA, of course, much more extreme situations are going on there than here, but it might be helpful to people to know what the water supply situation looks like.
All right. We've had an action moved and seconded on item 3B, council bill O-2009-08. All those in favor, please state it by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just make one, one final comment. Water is a big discussion, certainly in California, and certainly in Southern California. And we have been, we are continually being encouraged by all sorts of entities to cut back on our use of water, to be more careful with our use of water, to conserve the water that we have. And as I've said before, we don't have a shortage of water, we have a shortage of cheap water. Last year, I, well, I have watered my yard, my front lawn, and cut my front lawn for 20 years, I got tired of it. I took my lawn out. I don't have a front lawn anymore. And I would welcome anybody in this city to come by and look at my front lawn, and see whether I made a mistake by taking it out or not. I don't water my lawn anymore, I don't have to water my lawn. Please come by and have a look, and see if what I did was the right thing. I have lots of people stopping by in my street, just stopping by and saying, "Man, how did you do that? That is the most attractive thing that I've seen. Can't keep the neighbor kids off of it. Come by and have a look sometime, and see what, see what you can do to cut back on your water supply. I did it."
Item number four, this relates to fire department fee for subscription, for service and subscription program. And Chief Bender, turn the time over to you for a report on this.
Thank you, Mayor and council. On January 13, the city council adopted EMS fee for service and subscription program. At the May 12 council meeting, we formalized the details and structure of that program, and set tonight's council meeting as a public hearing for the associated fees. The, in the study that the consultant did, we basically put his recommended fees. There was a study analyzing all the costs associated with fire department response. There was also market rate survey conducted to make sure those costs fell in line with the market rate. The consultant found that they did, and their recommendation is, was for a fee of $300 for residents, $400 for non-residents, but also the $48 subscription option for the residents of Loma Linda, to protect them from incurring those higher bills. The council also asked that we include a non-resident option, which we have captured at a rate of $60 per person. These costs are in the resolution, that's before you, and so our request is the council adopts the resolution, which includes the recommended fees for the program.
Now, that's per year.
That's correct.
Any specific questions for Chief Bender from council? If not, thank you for your report, and I will open this item as a public hearing. I believe I have one slip for me on this item, and Ms. Cheryl, all right?
I can understand the fire department's fee for service, however, we have a lot of elderly people that live here in Loma Linda, and live on a very fixed income, and I think that if it meant them having to pay a $300 bill, they would probably not utilize the 911 service, because they knew that they could not afford it. I do believe that our taxes do pay for this, for those of us who live in the city, and those who don't live in the city, well, then, they're the ones that should be billed for the service. So I would like to see that the resolution not be passed, for fear that the elderly residents would not use the service that they are entitled to, strictly because of that bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and discussion by council. If I could just mention, there are some very specific provisions in this ordinance for those with financial needs. Your points well-taken, and I think fire department, council, and staff have tried our level best to include hardship issues that we think will cover that, but it is very important. And then if I could just mention, the only other addition I would make to Chief Bender's report, you know, we could even potentially put the timeline back. You know, we struggled for years in looking at ways to improve public safety and implementing paramedic service, when we finally implemented it, I believe that's about nine years ago. I think the council all recognized this was a significant increase in financial costs, but we decided it was worth it. We tried to, you know, figure out ways to cover that very significant added cost and benefit, but unfortunately, the day of reckoning finally has caught up with us, especially with the economy doing what it's doing, and wish it wasn't so, but it does seem like that's occurred. Further discussion from council or direction?
I move council bill R-2009-23.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries unanimously. Appreciate all the good service you provide, and be able to continue with this, I believe, with this funding.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, that this does give us the ability to do, which I have felt we needed to do for a long time, and it gives us the ability to bill insurance companies. I pay, many of us pay a big insurance premium for health care, and yet, and when the paramedics come and the ambulance, and the paramedics come, that is health care service, which we were unable to bill an insurance company for. And my insurance company, because I pay my premiums, needs to pony up and pay that. And this gives us a way to do that. I felt for a long time it's needed to be done.
And I guess one other thing I may comment, because when this came up, I spent a lot of time with the fire department discussing, you know, was one of the reasons they were adopt, we were considering adopting this, and I was very surprised and actually shocked to find out that we have such a good fire department, people are actually using it to basically provide regular health care. One of the, it's amazing, you'll actually see multiple houses where people will use the fire department for everything, and unfortunately, sometimes, as a result, that affects all of us, and it's indicative that they do such a good job, people like to see them often, and unfortunately, a lot of those people who actually use it do not pay taxes in the city, because a lot of them are non-residents. And this is one way for us to recover some of the costs of providing such a good service. And I think that residents do pay taxes for fire protection, and we decided to provide them with even more services, but at the same time, not everybody needs those services, so we felt that this was the only fair way in which those who utilize it more often have an opportunity to buy into a system without affecting those who may not be using it. So that's one of the reasons we're adopting it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One thing I'd like to request, chief, is down the line, when you get perhaps six months into this, if we could get a report back on the subscriber list, not names, but the breakdown, because I'm noticing now, like the medical center or any other major facility, they would have a charge, I believe, per bed, of that being one household. Is that the way I understand it correctly? Does that counsel that? So it's $48 per bed, per year?
Yes.
Okay. So what's going to be important is to understand how many, how many of those types of organizations subscribe, to get some idea if the projections are working out as anticipated, and if there's anything that seems unjust or unfair, that we could always come back and, you know, I think we all want to be fair on this, and not hit one group unfairly to subsidize another group.
Thank you.
In addition to that, as we, as we market this moving forward now, we will make sure everyone gets the information on how they can protect themselves with the membership to avoid those bills that you're speaking of, and with a heavy emphasis on the elderly community as well. We respond a lot there and recognize that need, and we will...
How would you be able to let people in the community who are non-residents, no, because 87% of our working population are non-residents? And so, let me, let me use an example. Let's say that a major institution signs up. Would its employees basically be covered by that, if the organization signed up, so all employees would be covered?
Yes.
Okay. So if you have an organization like that that does not sign up, is there some way we could talk to the employers in town, maybe through the Chamber of Commerce, to ask them to at least put out information to their employees, so employees become aware that there's an option for them, that's much cheaper than, than having them surprised?
Yes, we'll work with the chamber.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item number six, this is a joint...
Five.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, you're absolutely... I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, you're absolutely right. Item number five, this relates to report on sewer system management plan, and won't read the whole listing on the agenda, but we'll ask Public Works to introduce and provide a report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little background is on September 23, 2008, and April 14, 2009, the City Council did conduct a public hearing and approved the initial six elements of the sewer system management plan. So tonight, we would like to request that the City Council review and approve the remaining five elements of this plan, and we will submit that to the, the state regional water quality control board, as in my report.
I move.
It is a public hearing, so we'll open this for any comments from the public. Seeing no one coming forward, and I don't believe I have a slip on this one, I will close the public hearing. And thank goodness, we're not asking for any rate increases on this one, right? I did hear a proposal to move it.
I'll second that.
Is that still proposed?
It was in a hurry, sorry.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
One could just quickly ask the question, what would happen if we didn't do this? This is one of those things required by the government, I guess, isn't it, so?
We don't want to find out.
No.
All right. See if I can get back on the right, right number here, number six. And this is a joint issue of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency, and I would like to ask Vice Chairman Popescu to call Redevelopment Agency to order.
We hereby open the Redevelopment Agency for this joint public hearing with the RDA, and I relinquish the chair back to the mayor as he continues with these items.
Thank you. This relates to some agreements on housing and some sales on a couple of properties, and would like our city clerk and slash agency secretary, as many of us wear multiple hats, to please provide a report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Agency, this involves two properties, one a condominium on Prospect Avenue and one regular home in the Parkside tract. Both of the properties have long-term affordability covenants on them that run with the land. The new rule is 45 years, that's mandated by the state. The Prospect Avenue property is one of seven units that the agency has an interest in, and the Parkside property is one of, I want to say 35. In both cases, the, the owners of the homes approached the agency to purchase, and it was basically supported by the executive committee. We have income-qualified buyers for both properties, and so the resolutions tonight would authorize going forward, opening escrow, and actually concluding the sale for both of the properties. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, would like to open a joint public hearing for City Council, and as Vice Chairman has given me permission, Redevelopment Agency, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Discussion or action from council?
Move Council Bill R. 2009-24.
Second.
Can we do all of these in one, or are we...
Can we do all of these, and when do we do all of them?
Do them one at a time, keep our city attorney happy. Move and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I move 2009-07.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move item number, Council Bill 2009-25.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move CRA, Bill 2009-08.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those all carry unanimously. Consent calendar, any, been moved, seconded, any items to be pulled, or I guess not, but at least commented on?
With a comment, and that is item number eight. I, I can't tell you how pleased I am to see this on the agenda. We have waited for this, I have waited for this, we all have, for, I can't even count the number of years.
Many years.
And the pain, and the discussions we've gone through in order to get this to happen. A great thing. The, the one question I do have, Jarb, is there some way that we can see the design, the landscape design, what's going to happen, is, who, what is it going to actually look like?
I have it in my office, you're welcome.
You do? So we can stop by, okay, that's fine.
Along with that, Jarb, I guess when the Mountain View Bridge is done, there'll be then a tunnel underneath that'll open up.
Yes, sir, there will be a tunnel underneath the Mountain View Bridge, Mountain View Street, so you can use the trail to go right...
So you're going to have a little ribbon cutting when that occurs?
Yes, sir.
Along with the bridge itself?
Yes, sir.
Double cutting.
I, I might add that as of recently, I've been riding my bike with my kids along the creek, and it's been great to be able to go back and forth. I do have one problem, there is a stray dog out there that keeps chasing us, and hopefully the owner will, there's a stray dog that keeps chasing us, but hopefully that will get resolved over time.
With that PR, maybe if you give a little more information, that owner will become aware that their dog is out.
I think the owner's aware, aware. I mean, the dog is quite a nuisance.
Never know, may be a purposeful stray dog. Can you just give us a brief update of the area for the habitat? Is it just on one end of the creek, or the whole length of it, pretty much in town?
Yes, sir, it's along the south side of San Timoteo Channel, start out at, a little bit to the west of Popular Street, along the San Tim channel, and come all the way to the Whittier Street, on the area within the county flood control right of way.
Great, so it'll cover a good share of, of town. All right, we've had the consent calendar moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 And none opposed, that carries. Well, that does bring us toward the end of our agenda. Any new business that needs to be commented on? I guess it's not officially listed, so better not be any new business. Reports of councilman, Councilman Zipper.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kunaheira brought up a point earlier this evening that actually has been addressed by a number of people over the years. I, I'm thinking about 15, 15 years back, and the, the complaint that's made is that the election rules in our, in our city are not, are not really totally clear, and some people put signs where they believe it's okay, others, and they get them pulled by code enforcement. And it's, it's gone on long enough that his point is echoed by a lot of people. I'm wondering if we, since, you know, elections will be, as long as we have a democracy in this country, it will be a way of life, maybe we could ask staff, working with the city attorney, to take a look at the law. I, I've been told, the point that was not made tonight, but I've been told by people from other campaigns, that we have some rules that restrict sign size and things like that, and, and maybe some people would like that, but I've been told by people from campaigns outside our community that those may actually be not legal. And, and I, I think maybe it's a good time to ask the city attorney to take a look at those and, uh, look at the whole picture, and come back with a report, and maybe propose something that would be a fair revision.
I agree.
I, I totally agree, and I appreciate Dr. Kunaheira bringing that up. I think it's a wise suggestion, and would honor Mr. Lealoa, and we need just some common sense things that we can put out so everybody understands. I think some of the issues that people, you know, frankly, are confused on, there's unfortunately sometimes, you know, actions that people take that shouldn't be, but I think 90% of it could be avoided if we just figure out what makes sense and clearly state them, maybe we could do better on that. So anyway, if we can bring that back. I, I'd be happy to work with staff on that. Deborah and I have talked about our, our sign code in the context of the, the entire development code that needs to be updated. There are some issues with the sign code, and in particular, the issue of political signs is something that is very touchy. There's been quite a bit of litigation in other cities over certain restrictions, as Councilman Zipper mentioned, and so it certainly bears looking at and an update. It, it would have been included as part of the overall review of that development code, but we could certainly bring that to the forefront and handle that separately.
If you could cut that out, may, and maybe look at it discreetly, because the, that's something that, actually, I've had people over quite a few years bring that up, and I, I've said to people, well, I know we'll get to it eventually, but I think probably if we get to it now, since it was raised tonight, maybe it's a good time to look at it earnestly.
We, we could defer to state law requirements while we're preparing the development code, and that has happened, I think, on a number of, of those types of issues that the city maybe hasn't updated it, but we're in the process of doing it, so we can defer to state law.
You mean as of now, just say we're deferring state law?
Yes.
Of course, it would help to know what that is in terms of...
Right, and so we'll look into it and, and see if that's possible.
Maybe a report come back, and then citizens who are interested in getting involved in the campaigning process would maybe have a place to go to look as well. Sounds good.
My own comment, I actually welcome the discussion. I just wanted to point out that at the last election, Mayor Brower, I think, had only about 20 signs and got the most votes. So sometimes signs may not, or may not make a difference in an election, but one never knows.
Councilman Peterson?
I'd just throw in my two cents to tell you, I've been doing this for a goodly number of years, I worked for a number of cities, there's no perfect sign permit that you're, or policy that you're going to ever come up with, and every politician that ever runs for any office is always going to complain about the other guy's signs, and I don't care how, how good a policy you think you write, it's not going to be good enough.
Maybe in your retirement, we could retain you to come back and write the perfect one.
No, thanks.
We'd be honored to have you come back and present it.
Councilman Peterson, did you have an issue? I just had one thing, just was going to comment on it. In the consultant's report on the fire paramedic fee, just kind of interesting looking at some of the demographics and some comparisons and so forth, you know, they looked at kind of their home city, I think where they're out of, Walnut Creek, families below poverty level, 1.7%. Loma Linda, 13% of our families are below the poverty level, and that's just about average for San Bernardino County. Our median household income, it's a few years back, but same dates for all of them, again, $38,000. In Loma Linda, slightly lower than average for the county, and way below Walnut Creek at $63,000. So again, only reason I bring it up, you know, we're, we're not a rich city, we have some very needy individuals, we, on the other hand, I think have a very, very fine city, but just show some of the challenges that we face, we're not a rich city like Walnut Creek and some others that may be in that position, so just of interest.
I just wanted to make a quick public service announcement, as Mr. Ramos earlier indicated in the need for people to look into donating and helping the food bank. Obviously, we have a lot of non-charitable institutions in our city, one of them being the Children's Hospital, and I just wanted to do a quick plug for one of their fundraisers that they're going to be doing on Monday, the June the 15th, at 8:00 PM in Los Angeles, there's a number of celebrities that have joined together, and they're involved in putting together a show called Celebrity Autobiography, is supposed to be well-reviewed by many of the folks in the entertainment industry, and if anybody's interested, they can contact the Children's Hospital Foundation and purchase tickets to attend that. I will be attending that with my wife, and I think it's a great event where you can have a little bit of fun and at the same time help some of our local institutions. Thanks.
If no other reports of councilmen, any reports of officers? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. We have a little bit unusual tonight, a financing authority, which is not technically City Council, but we'll get to that after Redevelopment Agency, so I will adjourn the City Council meeting and turn things over to our RDA Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Brower. We'll reconvene the RDA with the regular agenda. Are there items, any of the items added or deleted?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any items that the public would like to be a, a part of or participate that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I don't think there's any conflict of interest. We move forward with item number one. We already addressed all those items when we had the joint meeting with the City Council. Now we go to our next item, which is item number two, and this is an item related to a, they intend to issue a tax-exempt obligation for a particular property, and I will have our executive director, our city manager, perhaps comment on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency board, this is a conduit bond. It's not an obligation of the agency, nor the city, it's merely issuing bonds for the development of 120 more units to be placed on Popular Avenue.
Second.
I see a first and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes all the items in the regular agenda. Are there any other reports? Seeing none, we call this RD meeting, we adjourn.
I will call to order our Loma Linda Public Financing Authority for our big annual meeting here, and do we need official roll call? We have determined we have a quorum, any items to be added or deleted?
No, Mayor.
Any oral reports from the public of anything not on this agenda? Seeing none. Do we have some action on the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Yes. I second the minutes, which only contain moving and seconding the minutes from the previous meeting.
My only comment would be that I was elected but hadn't been sworn in, so I was not at that meeting, but a month later I was...
We'd be delighted to have you vote on it anyway.
Given the fact that most of you think it's accurate, then I have no problem with voting on it.
Again, all these great arcane laws that we have to follow. Anyway, the action of approving the minutes has been moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't hear any opposition, any reports from anyone? If not, the Public Financing Authority is adjourned till next year, hopefully.